So I think we're about ready to get underway. We've got a few participants joining us from the public. Great to see. Okay, so it's a couple of minutes after seven, so I will call the meeting to order. And we'll begin by standing for O Canada. Okay, thank you, everyone. So I'll hand things over to our CEO, Don Marshawn, for a roll call of councillors.
For Sean Sampson. Councillor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, present.
Okay. Deputy Warden Michael Digden. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Present.
Difficulties.
Okay. Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Or an Amanda Mumbercat.
Present.
Councillor Bren Sampson.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Don. So the next item on the agenda is, for any items added, I do have a couple, but I'll put it up to councillors first. Is there anyone who has items to add to the agenda? Councillor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, I would just like to make an acknowledgement, if I could, please.
Okay.
As you can see behind me.
Okay, that's, that's a cue. All right, so community acknowledgements. All right, items that I would, oh, sorry, could I get an agreement from councillors to add that to the agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so we'll add that, thank you. The items that I had to add today are communication from Destination Cape Breton Association regarding Richmond County's representatives. And, okay, I guess we'll do these one at a time. So if, if councillors are okay with me adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then the last item I had was to add in-camera contract negotiations. If you're okay with adding that to the agenda, just indicate by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. Thank you, so.
Adam Ward, excuse me, I just, I just have one, I guess, to, to discuss on the, on our flag policy. And I know it's policy, I guess, on our flags that are being flown, I just had it brought to my attention, I'd just like to bring it to the public and we can discuss it.
So just related to this policy specifically, or just?
No, just the flags on. Just the flags in general.
Okay, yeah. So, flags on display at municipal offices, is everybody okay with us adding that to the agenda? Please say aye.
Yep.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. So that's four additions to the agenda. Are there any others? Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Or any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. All right, thanks, everyone. And next on the agenda are the review of minutes. So we've got two sets of minutes that were circulated. One is from our June 28 regular council meeting. And again, those minutes were circulated in advance. Were there any errors or omissions noted in those minutes? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I'll make that motion to approve them.
Okay, so I think I was our councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a secondary, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. So any further discussion on the minutes from June 28?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. So the next is our June 30 special council meeting minutes. Again, those were circulated in advance. Are there any errors or omissions noted? Okay, so here none, could I have a motion to approve those June 30 minutes, please?
Sold.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there a secondary for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you Deputy Warden. So any further discussion on the June 30 minutes? Okay, so hearing none, I'll call for the question, please.
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks very much, everyone. So I just want to mention, we're going to head into our question period is the next item on the agenda. And people watching this evening will notice that we haven't shared the agenda continuously through the meeting. We just had some feedback. I did anyways, from a couple of constituents looking to maybe be able to see our faces a little bit better as we're having the discussion. And so we put the agenda up at the beginning of the meeting. It's also available on the website, should you need it. And, and please let us know if you like this better, or if you'd like us to go back to displaying the agenda. We're happy to adapt to, to the desires of the public. So we'll open it for question period. At this point, there's a 10-minute question period. It is restricted to items on the committee of the whole report. Those items were listed in advance and directly on the agenda for your review. And so I'll just leave it open for a moment for questions. Nothing in the chat? Okay. All right, so we'll move things right along. So I will hand things over to the deputy warden to provide our committee of the whole report from September 13th of this year. What do you, Deputy Warden?
Many of the whole report for the month of September 2021. Committee man on September 13, 2021. The committee discussed a request for a letter of support. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that a letter of support be provided to bear head energy regarding support for the project and industrial development in the Point Duffer area.
So a motion has been made by the deputy warden. Can I have a secondary on that?
Second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed truth and reconciliation day. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that September 30th, 2021, be recognized as truth and reconciliation day in the municipality of Richmond and be included as a municipal holiday.
Okay, so the motion's been made by the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
Sold. So seconded.
Thank you councillor Melanie. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed an amendment to the hours of operation policy. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the addition of national day for truth and reconciliation as statutory holiday be referred to the bylaw policy committee in order to amend the hours of operation policy to reflect the addition.
Motion is on the table from the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion's carried.
The committee discussed the flag raising ceremony. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the municipality conduct the flag raising ceremony on a date to be determined in honor and recognition of truth and reconciliation day.
Okay, so it's been moved by the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried.
The committee discussed strategic planning. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that staff prepare a draft RFP for an external source to aid in the creation of a strategic plan and that councillors review the draft prior to the September 27, 2021 regular council meeting.
Okay, so it's moved by the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
Second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed fire department's levy payment schedule. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the creation of a fire department levy payment schedule policy be referred to by law policy committee meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion from the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed water sewer bill notices. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that notices letters regarding significant changes to water and sewer bills be referred to the bylaw policy committee for review.
Okay, so could I have a secondary on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried.
The committee discussed grant requests. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that request for funding from the Lennox Passage Club in the amount of $500 be approved from the district fund.
This motion's been made by deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the funding request from Raising the Village Corporate of Limited Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds be approved in the amount of $2,500 with $250 being distributed from each of the five district funds and the remaining 1,250 being distributed from the general grant fund.
Okay, so there's a motion been made. There was some additional discussion about this at committee of the whole and we may need to make an adjustment here, but, but at this point, because there's a motion on the floor, procedurally, I'll just ask for a secondary. Okay, so there's no secondary on that motion. Is there any other discussion on councillor?
Question.
Well, there's no, there's no motion.
Sorry.
Yeah, motion wasn't seconded. I just wanted to provide an opportunity to, for councillors to discuss a potential motion at this point, or we can revisit it at the next committee of the whole, whichever.
That's what I was gonna say, is it possible to revisit this at the next committee of the whole? Because I believe I was the one that made the motion on this before, but just unintentionally created consequences I didn't plan to. So I think I'd rather if we brought it back and thought of a new way to, to go about this.
Okay. Any other thoughts from councillors on this? Okay. So, I don't think we need a motion to bring it back to committee of the whole. We have, we still have the original application and so we will just, we'll just keep that on our agenda for the next time. Okay, thank you councillors. Deputy Warden, back to you.
I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the request for funding from the River Boursua Mariner Society Type IV Regional Health General Grant Fund, excuse me, in the amount of $1,000 be approved with $500 distributed from District Number Four fund and $500 distributed from the general grant fund.
Okay, so the motion's been made. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so motion's carried.
I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the request for funding from the Aire Shack Community Development Association Type Regional Health General Grant Fund be approved in the amount of $7,500 with $1,200, $1,250 distributed from each of the District Number One and District Number Two funds and the remaining $5,000 to be distributed from the general grant fund.
Okay, so the motion's been made by the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that? Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion is carried.
I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the request for funding from the Anne K Breton Food Hub Co-op Type IV Regional Health General Grant Fund in the amount of $15,000 be denied due to $2,000 previously allocated in the budget.
Okay, so there's a motion from the deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. All right, thank you, everyone.
This concludes, I'm gonna read that back. Yeah, this concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of September 2021 and I move its adoption.
Okay, so the report's been moved in its entirety. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report from last, last two weeks ago?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried and that was a busy meeting. So, thanks, everyone. Lots to do, lots to do. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the first reading approval. This is to amend by law number 50 Municipal Emergency Management by law in order to make a series of changes that have been specifically outlined on the agenda and available to the public. I won't read through them all because there's just too many and they are, I guess, as well, as I said, available to the public. So could I have a motion to approve the first reading to amend by law number 50?
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment of by law number 50.
Thank you, deputy warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? And that motion is carried. Thanks so much. Okay, I'm gonna hand things over to councillor Bren Sampson regarding coastal riders off highway vehicle letter support requests. So over to you councillor Bren.
Okay, so we have a letter here. I'll just read this through what was in the package. Raymond Barrett is the secretary treasurer of the Coastal Riders ATV Association. He is seeking a letter of support for a specific project. He's in the process of applying to the Nova Scotia Lands and Forestry Off-Highway Vehicle Infrastructure Fund Trails to construct a trail using the old number four road bed. The club has a permit from the Nova Scotia Transportation Infrastructure Renewal, or Nova Scotia Public Works now, I believe, for the use of Route 21-65. The funding request is for a section of trail known as the old number four highway. It runs from Lynch's River to Salmon River Road, a distance of about three kilometers. The work will consist of redoing the ditches, replacing one bridge and several culverts, removing vegetation, trees, grading the existing roadbed and res servicing with gravel. It's a fairly large project. They figure likely in excess of $40,000. There is a map attached to this, was in the package. The fund requests that the club show that they have support of municipal government. He is requesting a letter of support and letterhead from the municipality for this project. And then there's the map attached, as I was saying. So they're not looking for a financial support at this time. It's just support in principle, basically, that we're sort of behind the project in that, because that would help them in securing funding through the province.
Any, any questions for councillor Sampson on that item?
Excuse me, Brent, do you say that runs along the Lynch's River Road?
Between Lynch's River and the Salmon River Road. Yeah.
If I, I have a couple of questions. So I'm, my guess is that this is also part of the, the work that's being done to have multi-purpose trails, right? So the intention is not to do the work to the trail for it to just be used for OHB, right? It's also to be used for other purposes?
I'd have to check specifically with them. I would assume so, but I'm, I can't say with 100% certainty. But I don't believe that there's any restrictions on their trails that I've ever been aware of.
Yeah, I think that's the same fund that most of the, yeah.
Clubs are, yeah.
So that's actually, it's the name of the fund. It's called the OHB Infrastructure Fund, right?
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, but the intention, I think, is that, so I guess that was my question. And then I guess I have a comment, which is, you know, we've been supporting other clubs who are creating multi-purpose trails throughout Richmond County. We've been supporting them financially, but also in terms of letters of support. And I think this is just another piece of that puzzle to continue the trail infrastructure in the county. And I definitely would be in support of providing such a letter.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Deputy Warden, did you have?
I do, I agree. That's a, you know, it's nice to see the initiative expanding and the people putting the work into the trails and making them grow. So my councillor Melanie Sampson, I'm 100% supporting behind it.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. To echo councillor Nani and deputy Warden's words, I'll be supporting it as well. Going back to what councillor Nani said, you know, we have to make sure that we're, you know, we're discussing multi-use rails, right? So hopefully that's what this is about, that multi-use is where it's going, right? But yeah, it's, it's great to see initiatives in trails being developed in our county, for sure.
Okay, so I guess I'm hearing some consensus from councillors, so I'm wondering if anyone would like to put forward a motion to issue that more of support?
Make a motion to issue a letter of support to the Coastal Riders ATV Club in support of their ongoing project.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Could I have a secondary on that? Oh, you're muted, I think councillor Melanie Sampson.
I am. Yes, I'd like to second it. Deputy Warden might have got ahead of me in my mood last day.
Yeah, everybody was waving. I don't know. I'll take your word. Councillor Melanie Sampson, thank you for seconding that. Any further discussion on that item?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. Thanks councillor Bren Sampson. And so we didn't talk about who was gonna write that letter in the motion, but I'm wondering, did you want, did you want to tag team on that? I actually think I might have a bit of a letter of support from another club that I could maybe use to, would that be helpful councillor Brent? Or do you have something that you would like to draft or assist to?
No, no, that's okay. We can work together on that if you want.
Perfect, okay. Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
Reinvent the wheel.
Right on. Okay, so next items on our agenda, and there's several, but we'll begin with a proclamation regarding Right to Know Week 2021. And I'm not sure if councillors will remember, but I'm pretty sure we passed this proclamation at our very first council meeting, like very first one ever last year. So this year it's back on our agenda. And the proclamation has been circulated and I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review it. I wanted to just kind of, before we read through it, I wanted to put it for discussion. And then I'll be asking for a motion to adopt it. So any thoughts from councillors on this item?
Yeah, for me, Madam Morton, I mean, it's, it's Right to Know Week. But I think we can all agree that when we ran our campaign on openness and transparency and consultation with the public and all that stuff, I don't think it should stop at Right to Know Week. It should be a week, you know. For me, my district and my residents and all taxpayers of Richmond County have a right to know yearly. So for me, if anybody asks us questions and the taxpayer wants to know something, yeah, we shouldn't stop it at a, at a weekly, a weekly thing. That should be something that falls on all of us to say you have the right to know 365 days, not just seven days, right, so.
All set.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden, did you, it looks like you were gonna say so.
Yeah, so I'll, I guess I'll piggyback on councillor Sean Sampson's comments. A little further into, into detail, just, and most people may know or may not know that the FOIPOP process is an option for them to, to get information. I would just like to let all, definitely my constituents and all constituents of Richmond County know that, you know, if they're looking for information that I can provide or that I have, by all means, reach out to me in any way, email, phone call, whatever. They don't have to go through the FOIPOP process for, although it's the right, they, they definitely don't have to get, go through that process for any information that I might have or would have. You're more than welcome to, to be included in any conversation that I had or, yeah, or anything that they, they require.
Thanks, everyone. Any other comments on that? So if councillors are in general agreement, I'll, I'll start by reading it in its entirety. So the proclamation for Right to Know Week, September 27th to October 3rd, 2021. Proclamation reads, whereas the municipality of the county of Richmond has adopted the principles of openness, transparency and accountability and whereas municipal government act gives citizens a right of access to information in the custody or under the control of the municipality of the county of Richmond. And whereas access to information ensures citizens of Nova Scotia have the opportunity for meaningful participation in the democratic process. And whereas a celebration of the right of citizens to access information will facilitate informed public participation in policy formulation, ensure fairness in government decision-making and permit the airing and reconciliation of divergent views. And whereas the municipality of the county of Richmond joins all other Canadian jurisdictions and democracies worldwide in acknowledging International Right to Know Week. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Warden Amanda Mumbercat, municipality of the county of Richmond, do hereby proclaim September 27th to October 3rd, 2021, to be Right to Know Week in the municipality of the county of Richmond. If I could have a motion to support that proclamation.
I'll make a motion to support that proclamation.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a secondary on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion on that proclamation?
Questions?
Questions?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thanks so much everyone. And Dawn and Yvonne, I will sign this and get it back to you as soon as possible. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, and I sort of apologize to councillors right off the bat. This was a massive package that I added regarding the Coastal Protection Act. But it is, it is a great deal of detail and it does have potential implications for municipalities. Specifically, I wanted to cover a couple of things that have arisen in my discussions with other elected officials, but also with Eastern District Planning Commission and the board of directors there. So just to give some background, the act was passed in twenty nineteen. It will come into effect when the, when the new regulations are approved. When that happens, a new coastal protection zone will extend around the coast of Nova Scotia and new requirements will apply to constructing houses and other structures in those zones. The regulations will outline the protections for sensitive coastal ecosystems and ensure construction is at a safer height or safe and distance from coastal shorelines. The purpose is to mitigate the impacts obviously from sea level rise, but also coastal flooding and coastal erosion. So, you know, as I mentioned, having discussed this with others, I do have some concerns about how the province plans to roll out the act. Specifically, the province seems to be leaving it in the wording up to municipalities to administer, monitor and enforce the act. Coastal protect, protect, protection permits would be issued by municipalities or EDPC on our behalf and would be based on those current draft regulations. So there's been concern expressed that municipalities really don't have the resources or the capacity to necessarily enforce the action proposed in this act. The most recent conversation at our EDPC board meeting was that there really is a lack of clarity specifically for subdivision development. But that overall, the administration of provincial regulations should be provincial as opposed to municipal responsibility. And I, I, you know, I'm a big word counter. I did note that municipalities are mentioned in the, in the documentation over thirty times, where the Department of Environment and Climate Change is mentioned just once. So I, I was a little, you know, I wanted to share those concerns with council for discussion. The, the, the challenge is, is that there is a deadline for input of September thirtieth. So this has come up on us quickly. You know, where many municipalities weren't meeting over the summer. And so I guess I'm kind of wondering if councillors would be interested in submitting a letter to provide some feedback. We, you know, in the package, there was a copy of the letter that was provided by the county of Victoria, who was certainly, you know, taking a bit of a leadership stance on this as well. All municipalities, so in Cape Breton and certainly in Nova Scotia are gonna be definitely impacted by, by the act. And I thought that the, the wording in the Victoria County letter was really, was really tactful because, you know, in general, it expressed support for the protection of our coastal zones. However, there is that concern on the administration, on their inspection. So I just wanna open that for discussion with councillors. My thoughts?
Yeah, for me, Madam Warren, being on the board with you on, on the Eastern District Plan Commission Board and, and, and listening in on the concerns of Victoria County and reading their letter in this package, I too agreed that, of course, we're all on board when it comes to protecting our coastlines and, you know, our, our, you know, from our properties, from, you know, coastal erosion. We're, we're all on board when it comes to that, but this is a provincial-led action, you know. So for me, you know, I'd be on board with the way Victoria County, I'd write a letter saying, you know, we have some concerns here, right?
Okay, thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Deputy Ward, okay.
Yeah, so I guess I would, for me, it would be kind of a catch twenty-two. I, I like the, I like the idea that the province is taking a stance on protecting our coastal line. At the same time, I think as a municipality, we have the, unlike other municipalities, we're surrounded by water. So we also have to remember that a lot of our residents own property on, on the water and are looking at building on the water. So I think we just, it's hard to implement somebody maybe from Victoria's County's vision when they're not surrounded by water. So I think, I think we need to send a letter. I, I agree with that, I just think that we also have to be able to take a stand somewhere that we can't let the province dictate where our residents can and cannot build. That's something that we may wanna look at, meeting with EDPC and somebody with the province and maybe seeing what the best case scenario is.
Okay, councillor Melanie Sampson?
I'm, I, I mean, I'm not sure that I think that, that the approach of municipalities determining what's a suitable distance from the water or elevation from whatever is, is part of what we should be deciding. I, I do like the idea that the province is taking some leadership here, which I think is, is useful. But it's just another example of great ideas that get pushed down to us as a municipality and then we're forced to resource it and we, you know, we have shrinking funds and expanding needs for our funds, right? So, you know, if the, if the province was kicking in some money for us to find a position to do some of this work or whatever, maybe I'd feel differently. But I think right now, the concerns that the CAO in Victoria County in her letter, what Leanne has written, to me, I, the tone of her letter feels like what I would, what I would write, you know, the whole idea. We are concerned, we recognize there's a need for leadership here. But, but honestly, we can't have any more pushdown on this, we have a lot on go, a lot of places that our money's getting stretched. So I definitely support a letter, at least with concerns regarding that.
Okay. Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I, I guess I would reiterate a lot of that, I, I thought the idea in general sounds pretty good. Again, not fussy on a lot of the, a lot of it being downloaded, the responsibilities to the municipalities. I'm not sure if, you know, that, that's necessarily fair, but I think the idea in general is a good idea. And I think it, it makes a lot of sense for people going forward, because it ends up costing almost the heavy, it kinda costs everybody more money. If, if you see what happens when proper planning isn't put in place and people build, let's say, in a flood zone and then insurance rates for everybody go up, you know, and it was, it was basically a lack of planning sometimes. So I think, you know, there will be some pushback on this and I'm sure a lot of us wouldn't like all of the aspects of this. But I think overall, it's, it's probably a pretty good idea going forward. It, it just feels like good planning. But again, I, I would reiterate that I'm, I'm not really in support of a lot of the responsibility of it being downloaded to municipalities.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we have sort of a general consensus of, you know, the fact that, yes, we sort of agree that generally that the Coastal Protection Act is a good idea, but we have some concerns about the level of downloading responsibility to municipalities. So would it be fair to say that there's agreement from council to, for me to write a letter? I, I was gonna say to the minister, but I think there's actually a specific feedback address where you send it. So to provide feedback to that address, I, I think it would be wise to copy our local M L A on anything we send regarding the act as well. So would there be agreement from council for, for me to take the lead in writing up that type of a letter? I can copy all of you and then copy our, our local M L A as well. Would that be agreeable? Okay, maybe we could get a motion then to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, I, I make the motion that our, our warden send a letter off to the province, CCing, I guess, our M L A and our staff with the just mentioned.
Thank you Deputy Ward. Could I have a second around that? Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks so much, everyone. So the next item on our agenda is J-class road investments. So, you know, recall in our committee of the whole, we had asked staff to kind of come back with some information about how potential partnership might work with the province and, and the municipality, doing some upgrades to J-class roads. So the information that came back was, was that submitting the list does not commit the municipality to actually upgrading the road. The province will review all requests and come back with a notice of acceptance to municipal units. I believe they'll also include budgeted costs for those requested upgrades, which of course may be adjusted once the actual tender goes out. But if tendered pricing comes in higher, the municipality would be advised of the revised contribution. And then prior to the tender being awarded, if, you know, we may provide written acknowledgement that we, we don't wanna proceed with the work if it's more than we can afford, you know, as a municipality. And again, just a reminder that this would impact our budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I know that our public work structure obtains some, you know, generic sort of pricing per kilometre. That information was provided in the package. You know, the costs at the end of the day may vary depending on, you know, how busy the contractors are and the road condition and location and all of that stuff. So at this stage of the game, what I, you know, what I, what I was thinking we might do is try to establish a, a process or have a discussion that is solely focused on, on the J-class roads and how we may or may not want to participate. I just, I feel like it's probably more than what we, you know, I don't know about you folks, but my, the number one of the number one complaints I get from constituents is roads. And I feel like it deserves a great deal of attention. So I just, I'd like to hear your feedback on how you think we could proceed with potentially submitting a list, if that's what we choose to do.
Yeah, I, I'd be, I'd be all in favor of pursuing this a little further, because the same thing you're saying. I think it's probably the same for all of us, that the bulk of the concerns we get from residents have to do with roads. And if, if we, if we're able to, to help in some way on that, I, I, I think we definitely should, because it's the biggest, biggest concern I get, for sure.
Okay, thanks councillor Brent Sampson, now, councillor Melanie Sampson?
So when you and I chatted about it this weekend, I sort of in my mind was thinking, you know, I think in order for us to meet the timeline to get to the deadline of our request, we would need to have a list prepared, I believe, for the committee of the whole meeting in October, so that we can approve it at our regular meeting at the end of October and submit it to the Department of Public Works. So what I'm suggesting is that, that we plan a meeting probably like next week sometime, where we would, where councillors would come to a special meeting, let's say, where we come together with our list of the roads and our, the J-class roads in our district and sort of our assessment of those, because they're looking for us to create an overall county list. So my thought is, and I'm actually, I did a little bit of it already and I'm, I'm continuing some more of that work tomorrow, is just visiting my J-class roads, you know, making a list for myself, you know, how many houses are on the road? What's the condition of the road, maybe taking pictures, just whatever that I feel could either, could, could contribute to the conversation that we could have as a group. Right? Because maybe what I think is terrible is nothing compared to a road in, let's say, councillor Sean Sampson's district or whatever. But I do feel like it's.
Is there help paid?
Well, maybe, but I just, I, I feel it's there, I feel it's very important. I think this is an area where, as a council, we are able to affect change that will really be meaningful to our residents. And I don't wanna quickly throw a list together, I, I'd like to have some, we, you know, some real work on that. And I feel like that can only come from good preparation on a meeting that's scheduled specifically for that purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I totally agree councillor Nani, it's, it's, it's almost like going back to our young days in our young age where the Christmas wish book comes in the mail and everybody's fighting for it to open it and try to get their Christmas wish list, right? We've all done it, right? So for me, I agree. I think we're all gonna have a wish list, but it's all about identifying these roads and making sure that, that this, this list, you know, takes care of, what needs to be taken care of, more importantly, like in, you know, prioritize more of this, right? So, yeah.
Thank you councillor Sampson.
So let's work on that wish book list, yes.
Deputy Ward, did you have any comments, Tom?
Yeah, good luck to the wish book. And the, no, I guess, I guess the one comment it would be, and it would be to just agree with councillor Melanie Sampson, is that the, it's not about just throwing all our roads into one pot. Everybody knows that, you know, the province, like the municipality, only has so much money that they can spread out and spreading it out to the most important road is what has to be done. I can show you roads where nobody lives and the roads and dire streets. But at the same hand, if, you know, councillor Sampson, anyone that councillor Sampson's or yourself, madam, warden can show a road where there's ten people that live on it and the road's in the same, same, you know, shape. I guess it would take priority over the ones not living. So I think it is, it is in our, it's part of our job that we have to go and check our J-class roads and, yeah. And it's a great idea, bring it back next week.
Okay, so I don't think we would need a motion to that effect at this point in time. I think if we were going to reboot next week on this, we would all sort of have to make the commitment to go and do our homework, which I'm sure most of us have got a pile of it done already, just from the last year. But then maybe we could request that staff schedule a special meeting for us to speak specifically about J-class road improvement or our participation in it. So Dawn, could we ask you to look at the calendar and see if we could schedule something for, before our October thirteenth or October twelfth, I think it is, committee at all meeting?
Yeah, we can, see what we can come up with. Are you saying, are you saying next week?
As long as it's before the committee of the whole.
Before the committee of the whole on the twelfth is the, is the key, right? So, yeah.
Monday night?
So October fourth is the suggestion?
Be nice to have it decided tonight.
Yeah, it would be while we're all here and. Pardon me?
The fourth is fine for me.
Yeah, I can do the fourth. Yep.
Gonna make your work.
Yep.
Okay, that's great, let's schedule that special meeting then for October fourth. Thanks Dawn, that's a great suggestion and, and we'll try to get our homework done prior to that. Get, get a good look at our roads, see what's happening, okay? And just, you know, I guess I would just remind members of the public who might be watching is that, you know, any improvements, you know, any roads that we would submit, just to keep in mind that it would be for a fifty-fifty cost share. So definitely would have budget implications for municipality. And J-class roads, you know, wouldn't include like our hundred series highways and that type of thing, very specific type of roads, so. Okay. So thanks everyone, we've got a plan to meet on October fourth to discuss that further. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our cadet week. So we received a piece of correspondence, I think all councillors were probably copied on that regarding Cadet Day, which is Saturday, October second. And I just thought there was some really interesting statistics in there about the cadet corps in general that kind of blew me away a little bit. The fact that Nova Scotia has eighty-five cadet units, with more than three thousand youth aged twelve to eighteen enrolled in the program. I would never have guessed in a million years it was that big, so I absolutely wanted to share that information with the public this evening. The Royal Canadian Sea Cadet Corps Arrow, they currently parade fifteen cadets between the ages of twelve and eighteen and they actively participate in nautical leadership, marksmanship and musical training in hopes of promoting the importance of citizenship, a healthy lifestyle and interest in the Canadian forces and the marine environment. Since twenty-ten, the province of Nova Scotia has set aside the first Saturday in October each year to recognise Cadet Day in Nova Scotia. We hope that on October second, you will join others in the province to promote cadet units in their municipalities and bring recognition to the leadership of these youths, their hard work and the outstanding level of support they give to each camp. And I can tell you that having worked with our cadets, you know, firsthand, they, you know, they really do add so much to our community. And I know many of you have had the same experience. So I just wanted to open this for discussion on how we might recognise October second as Cadet Day. If councillors have any ideas they'd like to share? Open the floor.
Well, my intention is certainly to share something on social media about, about cadets on Saturday. Well, my intention is certainly to share something on social media about, about cadets on Saturday. So highlight, we also have an air cadet troop in St. Peters, right? Is that a squadron, I should say, I guess that's the term. My apologies for, for air cadets that I don't know the terminology, but certainly my intention is to learn more before Saturday and then, and then, you know, to just bring some awareness. I think to the fact that it is Cadet Day. And it is, it is amazing, over more than three thousand youth aged twelve to eighteen enrolled in Nova Scotia. Amazing, a really positive place to influence our young people, so they're doing really good work and. They do a lot of great community work too, so I definitely will be supporting them on social media on Saturday.
Thanks, councillor Melanie Sampson. Perhaps that's something we could do on the, on the county's Facebook page as well. CAO, we could make an arrangement to do something that like to celebrate Cadet Day, I'd be happy to draft something if. If that's helpful to.
Sure, that would be fine.
Councillor Sean Sampson, I'm sorry I cut you off.
Yeah, no, no, for sure, I, I agree that we have to recognize that, I mean, these, these young adults. These young adults with the help of the Sea Cadet Corps. And, you know, when they become great leaders in our community and the discipline they show and the dedication they show to the cadets and, and to our community. These, these young kids are known to be great leaders because of cadets, so I commend and applaud everybody involved. And I thank commanding officer Cassandra David for her letter to council and we will be making. Our, our support known for sure, yes.
Okay, thanks councillor Sampson, deputy Warden, did you have?
I, mine would be the respect, honestly, I think you can, you can almost pick out. A cadet, a young cadet, and they just show its, its ultimate class and ultimate respect all the way through they, you know, I don't know if it's. Almost every kid, I think, should almost have to go through the cadet corps just to learn a little bit of that respect issue, but it just seems that they teach it so well and, and the manners that they. They get from it, so, you know, I guess to the. To the teachers of the cadet squad, I want to commend you for the hard work that you do and for the students that are taking it. I also want to commend you for the leaders that you will become and thank you for the. For the support and contribution that you give to our county.
Next, deputy Warden. Councillor Brad Sampson, would you want to?
Yeah, we, yeah, we actually have all three types in Richmond County is Sea Cadet. Or in, in Almadame and Air Cadet Squadron, St. Peters and Army Cadet Corps in Lordways. And they've all been around for quite a long time and having gone through the program and Lordways myself for six years and then having worked. For another five, six years in the last decade or so. I can tell you that the, the people involved that put a lot of time into it and the, the kids get a lot out of it and it's a great program. The opportunities, you know, afforded to them to summer camp and, and some of the. The skills they're able to learn along the way, you know, travel with them through their life and especially, you know. Going to the summer camp programs, they, they tend to meet people, they'll, they'll know for, you know, the rest of their lives sometimes.
That's a really great point. Yeah, lifelong, lifelong friendships and, and networks, right? It's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so maybe what I'll do then is I'll. I'll start to draft something that we can definitely include on our social media and. Yeah, and definitely maybe we, you know, send a reply to Cassandra David as well and thank her for bringing this to our attention, I think that was, that was very thoughtful of her. So I just want to thank her for that, so. I don't think we need a motion to that effect, it's just a social media post and a thank you note, so I think we're okay, but. Any other final comments on that? Okay. All right, I'm going to move us on to the next item on our agenda then, and it's Accessibility Advisory Committee regarding the county approval of new members. So as you'll recall, last year we were very fortunate to have a number of members of the public step up and. Help us form our Accessibility Advisory Committee as mandated by the Accessibility Director of the Province of Nova Scotia. Deputy Warden and I are both on that committee. I currently co-chair it with Maxine David from Discoos. And I'm not supposed to have favorites, I'm sure, but it's like one of my favorites, there's no question, so much great energy around that table, I absolutely love it. But we did receive outreach over the summer from the village of St. Peters. To see if we would be interested in having kind of a, a joint committee. They had advertised as well for a separate committee, but didn't get a lot of responses, I mean, just population wise, the village is a lot smaller. And so we brought the idea of teaming up to the Accessibility Advisory Committee. And the, the committee voted unanimously in favor, so that was a result of a July, a motion on July fourteenth. It was moved by Maxine David and seconded by deputy Warden Michael Bayden, that we establish a joint committee with the village of St. Peters. So the new members of the committee. Are Jessica Gibson of St. Peters, Megan Hager, who's the village clerk, and Alison Martel, who's a village employee. But because this is officially a committee of Richmond County Council, we are seeking approval of the new appointees from. From Richmond County Council. If there are no, you know, problems or concerns with that, so. I just wanted to open that for discussion and then maybe entertain a motion to approve those three new members of the committee if council agrees.
I just want to clarify that the, 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 the portion in the, in the terms of reference. Where it talked about, you know, we're closely with the village of St. Peters, we're just saying that that is sort of our rationale for specifically adding them to the committee. I just, there's some areas that are highlighted, so I'm just, they're not new areas, it's just bringing attention to those areas.
That's right.
To just support the decision to add them.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
It's a great idea, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Sean Sampson?
I said it before, right, so we're all in this together, Richmond County's in this together, so the more the merrier and. Yeah, I, I welcome these new board members and appreciate them coming on board and, yeah, look forward to working with all of them for sure.
Other comments on that?
Can I just make a comment there?
Absolutely.
Um, the individual that's on the village commission, I don't think, needs to be approved by council. I think just the members at large or the people from the community need to be. Approved by council.
Okay, yeah. So the individual at large is Jessica Gibson. In St. Peters.
So would we have to re, I, if the individual at large changes position, would we have to revisit that? Or does it, does it affect us by adding her there now?
No, she, so she's not an employee of the village, she works actually with people who experience disabilities and who have disabilities and who. Often have mobility challenges, so similar to how there are two, two other members on our committee are in a similar situation. They work for service organizations that provide service to people with disabilities, and then we have another couple who are first voice people with disabilities as well. So I don't think we would need to worry about her changing positions, do you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
Just don't let the shooting.
I'll make a motion to approve Jessica Gibson as the new member of the accessibility committee.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson, could I have a second or not?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion?
Questions?
So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. I have to say, I do want to just give a little shout out to Alison Martel, who just of her own volition. Put together a disability etiquette presentation for us at our last meeting. And I might just share that with council, just for your, just for your viewing pleasure, because we loved it, it was awesome. Okay, so next item on our agenda. Is seniors week, and this is really just like to recognize the fact that October first to seventh. Is twenty twenty one is seniors week, it's an opportunity to celebrate the contributions that older adults make in our communities all across the province. You know, I think all we have to do is take a look around Richmond County and we'll see countless of the senior. Seniors who are volunteering in our community. And just, you know, it just underscores how important they are to our quality of life and our just general prosperity. Well, personally, I always try to learn from that example, from people who are willing to pitch in at a moment's notice, but. I just wanted to kind of say hats off to all of the seniors who are lending their hands and their experience and their talent. To making our families and our communities better, and I wanted to kind of offer, open it for discussion to council. If there was any comments you wanted to make in recognition of seniors.
Yeah, for me, Madam Morton, of course, like you say, you look, you look at all these seniors that, that, you know, that volunteer in our community. Are retired and, and, and. And provide their time and dedicate their time to our community and growing our community and volunteering in different groups. It's great and we should acknowledge all these seniors and be thankful, I know I am thankful. But also it's not about the, the seniors that are volunteering today, but when you look at the seniors that are in our community. Their former construction workers, their former draggermen, their former fishermen. You know, their, their former, you know. Employees, teachers, you know, so they've developed and built this county for what it is today. And I thank them all and applaud them all and wish them a good seniors week.
Thanks councillor Sean Sampson. We have a discussion on that?
I just, I think I would reiterate a lot of that, it's. Seniors in this county that paved the way for the rest of us and they still continue to do today, when you look at a lot of the service organizations around. The seniors that are really the backbone of, of the volunteer community around us. Yeah, can't say enough, appreciate the work they put in.
I'm thinking maybe we could, I also asked staff to do a bit of a special social media. Post on that as well. Maybe Dawn, that's something you and I could, could work on, some language to celebrate seniors week. Or maybe you guys had something planned, if, if so, just.
I can check with Laurie, see if he had something planned, and if not, maybe you could reach out to him and. See what, see what you guys can come up with.
That sounds great.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there was anything issued in the reflections of Richmond, I'm not really sure. If there was anything, however. Very likely would put something in on the website.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure.
That would be good, I did submit kind of a note to the seniors take action coalition newsletter. I'm not sure that we would have had it in time for the publication date for the fall reflections of Richmond, but, but yeah, that's a good idea, we can. Work with Laurie on that messaging as well, okay? Perfect. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the straight of cancel gateway project. So this project is back on our agenda because we're really at the next stage, you'll recall, I think some time ago, we had a presentation on it. The county has already submitted a letter of kind of support in principle for the idea. But right now, the stage we're at is the preparation of a multifaceted, multi-year plan. That will act as the basis for the straight to cancel gateway project for Cape Breton and Mawgi. So the Cape Breton Partnership has been taking the lead on this, they've provided a draft request for proposals. Which would seek a multidisciplinary consultant team to prepare a development strategy for the project. And that RFP was provided in the package. But prior to issuing the RFP, they are looking to confirm some funding commitments from stakeholders and partners. They're estimating the detailed development strategy will cost in the range of fifty to seventy thousand dollars. There is a commitment from a COA to fund half of such a planning strategy up to a total of thirty five thousand, and so with those figures in mind. The Cape Breton Partnership was seeking municipalities. To commit up to, I think, a total of five thousand dollars each. And so that is the amount that they're, that they're requesting that we invest in this project. I do want to also mention that. They've got committed funding from the town of Port Hawkesbury and Destination Cape Breton Association in the amount of five thousand each. They've also, they've also, I think, received verbal agreement from Victoria County and Inverness County for contribution of up to five thousand dollars. And the intention is then for them to go back and also ask the Cape Breton and Mawgi First Nations Chiefs. For a single contribution together towards the project as well. So I think at the end of the day, what they're saying is, you know, what the last correspondence I had from Lynn on this was that each funding partner has been asked to commit up to five thousand. But depending on the number of, you know, quotes received for the work and then also the funding committed by the various partners. We may, it may be a lesser amount than five thousand, so five would be the maximum. And I think in addition, the, the gateway project's going to be discussed with the CDR this coming week, so, or this later this week, so. So we do have some municipalities on board as well as Destination Cape Breton Association, I wanted to open it for discussion with council at this stage. If you feel that we should be, you know, maybe instructing staff to, you know, to find us a. Find us some budgetary room to support it to the two and five thousand dollars maximum, so. Any thoughts from councillors on this? Me, councillor Brent Sampson, I'll. Start with you.
Yeah, I'm assuming that would, would definitely be within this year's budget.
It would.
When, when is, okay, they require a minute, so. I guess, yeah, my only question would be to the CAO as to where we could possibly find it, but I mean, I think in principle, I'd definitely be in support of the project.
Me too.
You know, I. I, you know, I, it's a, it's, it's necessary, it's a great project, you know, it's, it's a big bang for five thousand dollars. The question always for me is where does the money come from, I think that's a question for, for, for the CAO and the CFO to, to see if there's a spot in the budget where we can make that work, so.
Deputy Warden?
Do we still have that trio back behind the municipality or is it?
Our money trees?
The money trees, the, I, I agree with, with both councillors, the, it is a big bang for the buck and. Yeah, I'm in full support.
Okay, thanks, councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, same here for sure, it's, it's an important project and being, being involved in the tourism industry for the past twenty eight years, yeah, that's. I think that's a big project and that gateway into. Into Cape Breton and into our area is, is, is going to be an important step forward, right? So, yeah, I support that fully, yeah. And, you know, the, the consultation that spoke about in this letter with, with all the municipalities and First Nations communities, yeah, so, yeah. Hopefully we can find, find the funding and, and, and help move this project forward.
Okay, thanks, I mean, I know, you know, there's always going to be in the run of a year expenses that crop up that are, that are unplanned, right? So. In, in the scheme of things, I'm, you know, I'm not sure I would consider this really a material amount in the scheme of our budget, but. Dawn, if you had any comments you wanted to add?
Yeah, actually I do, I'm just wondering, I'm, I read the, the correspondence from Lynn McClellan, McLennan. And I don't see anywhere's in there where they're talking about a timeframe or, or a specific time to provide this funding, so I'm just wondering. You, you get a sense of when we need to make a decision on this?
Well, I think sooner rather than later, so that they can issue the RFP and I, I, you know, I do know that the. The COA funding, I think, is scheduled for this fiscal year, so, you know, you know, the project itself is going to take probably a couple of months to complete. So I think they're just trying to line up their funding sources as soon as, as soon as possible.
Okay, so essentially we have a little bit of time that we can, I can discuss this with, with CFO and perhaps try and locate an area where. Where we might be able to accommodate. And perhaps I can provide some information at a later meeting. With respect to that, that funding request, if that's okay with you folks. Perhaps you can make a motion to. Permit staff to. Provide a report.
Sure, yeah, does that make sense for council?
If there's time for that, that's obviously preferable, yeah.
It looks, it sounds like there is.
I think, I think there is, yeah.
Is it possible to, and I don't want to put timeframe because I honestly don't know, is it possible? You think, Dawn, to have it, for the committee of the whole meeting, to then have it, I guess, for our next. To approve it, I guess, at our next meeting, that'll be in the, we're looking at the end of October then.
Well, it would, really wouldn't matter if it was to committee the whole meeting or the next council meeting as. A committee to whole recommendation is going to go to council anyway, so. You know, either way, if, if we have it for, if we have it for the committee, the whole meeting in October, it's not that far away, it's, it's exactly two weeks. There are some. There are some things going on the next couple of weeks that may not provide us with that, that time. But we can certainly have something for the October council meeting.
So yeah, I guess I would be, I'd be okay to make a motion to. Have staff look into funding. Have staff look into funding or available funding to. I guess. To support the project, yeah, thank you, Brent.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that motion? Council Brent Sampson? Yeah, okay. Any further discussion?
Questions?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Alrighty, so we've got several items added to our agenda. And so the first is community acknowledgements, so I'll hand it over to Councilor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, so as I started the evening, I'm going to pack up my chair here, so you guys can all see. That's a Friends Apparel t-shirt. I'm sure everybody in Richmond County has heard about Friends Apparel during the summer. He's, these kids, Levi Boudreaux, Kayden Clenin and Jalen Clenin. Went to a entrepreneurship camp. And their goal was to start a t-shirt company. But unfortunately, their option was already picked out for them, so. Their parents got involved and said, okay, well, we're going to buy some dye and we're going to buy some t-shirts and. There you go, Friends Apparel, right, so, yeah, so during the campaign, you would have heard me say that we have to start investing in. Young entrepreneurs in Richmond County and. And we got to start passing the torch to these young entrepreneurs, but little did I know that I'd be talking about kids that are not even teenagers yet. Alright, so for me, I just want to acknowledge these kids. Not only. You know, the talk of investing in young entrepreneurs. But these young entrepreneurs, what makes this whole story remarkable is that these young entrepreneurs are. Are investing in us and investing in our region and community. They were challenged to make a donation. For every t-shirt sold to a charity in our community, so. They donated four hundred and seventy seven dollars to Eastside Transition House.
Oh, wow.
How remarkable is this? If, if the future of Richmond County is in the hands of, of these young kids and young entrepreneurs. Like Levi and Kayden and Jaylen, then we're in, we're all in very good shape, so I just want to congratulate those kids. Congratulations to your parents and congratulations, Friends Apparel, again. Beautiful t-shirt, I wear it proudly, it's awesome, so just wanted to acknowledge it.
That's great. Thanks, Counselor Sampson.
Is there any chance that we can see what it looks like on, Counselor Sampson?
Maybe next meeting.
I wear it all the time. It's even going to wear, it's even going to match my orange shirt, mate.
I just think if you're going to promote something, it's only fair that you promote it properly.
Well done, Counselor Sampson. Definitely wins the prize for best boy this evening.
Wear it proudly, it's awesome. Congratulations to all those kids, it's awesome.
Congratulations to them. And maybe while we're on the topic of community acknowledgements, I also want to say congratulations to the Straightening Chamber of Commerce for. A successful golf tournament in Dundee again this year on this past weekend, September twenty fifth. And I want to thank them for continuing to choose Richmond County as the place where they host that tournament because it, it results in. You know, a significant investment in our community and, and that's a good thing, so. Alright. Okay, so I think that takes care of our community acknowledgements. Definitely, I, definitely Sean wins the prize for the most entertaining agenda item of the evening. Thank you. Most inspirational and entertaining. Next item on our agenda is a Destination Cape Breton Association representative. So I received correspondence, I believe it was earlier today, might have been late yesterday. Regarding our Destination Cape Breton Association representative from Richmond County. So Lisa Boudreaux from Alma Dan is currently our representative on that board, but her current position is up for renewal as of their AGM next month. She is eligible to serve an additional three-year term, but I wanted to check to see if. Councillors would be, would be okay with Lisa continuing in that role. Comments that I've received from Destination Cape Breton Association Director. Has been that she's been a very good board member and has made a strong contribution to their organization and I have absolutely no doubt of that. So I did want to just check in, though, if this is something that council felt that we could renew. As such, for an additional three-year term at this point, or if you think we should go back out to public for expression of interest.
When are they needing, when are they needing to have that? I mean, I have no doubt that Lisa is a fantastic representative for our area Destination Cape Breton Board. It's not about that. It's just more about. If there was other people who may be interested, who may like to have a chance to represent us at that board, I would hate to just dismiss that idea. Just dismiss it. So I guess my question would be. When do we need to, when do we need to provide the name of our representative?
So I, the information I have is that is as of the AGM next month, but I'm sure if council, you know, decides. To go in one direction or another, then Destination Cape Breton, I'm sure will accommodate that. For us, I'm sure.
With Destination Cape Breton, now with Destination Cape Breton, put feelers out for any kind of interest like Counselor Melanie Sampson said, would, you know.
I think it would probably be up to us if we decided to replace our representative on that board. I will note that it is a three-year term, so it's, it is actually still within our mandate, you know what I mean, like. And, and then usually at the end of every four years, that's when we advertise for expressions of interest for new boards. Just this one, the timing fell a little weirdly for us, so normally we would have done this last year.
Yeah, so I echo Bulger comments. You don't want to miss out if someone wants to have that opportunity. And you also cannot dispute the, the work that Lisa Boudreaux does in, in this community. And then when it comes to tourism in, in Cape Breton, so, yeah, so, so, that's a, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Brent Sampson?
I can understand that from both ways, but I. Yeah, I did. I have any strong opinions on this one, one way or another.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Warden, I don't know if you got to chime in on that?
I just, I just love the way that Counselor Brent Sampson was two stepping. It was actually pretty good. The, I, I, yeah, I agree with Counselor Melanie Sampson, although. I think we have to look at, and obviously Destination Cape Breton looked at it as well, that if. Lisa's been the representative this long, then we definitely want to show support. And I don't mean to say it in one direction or the other, but we want to show that, I guess, our appreciation. Instead of support, we want to definitely make sure that we show our appreciations for the work that she's done in the past. And hopefully, the work that she will continue in the future, but I kind of agree with Counselor Melanie Sampson, we, it should be put out to the public and then we can make a decision.
I'm feeling that we don't need to make a big deal about this, right? You know what I mean? Like, I almost feel, you know, is it possible for us to maybe, you know, put something on social media and just say, you know, for the next couple of weeks, anybody who might be interested should just express their interest. You know, I, I, I don't know that we need to make a big, a big production out of it like we do for. The other committees that we started at the beginning of our term, where we advertised in the paper and we did, you know, there was a whole part, you know. So even if it was a very short window of time where people had to put their name forward, maybe. You know, by Thursday before the committee of the whole, it would be a pretty short period of time. And that way, at least we open the door for anybody who might be interested. You know, and then we could just make that decision in terms of, you know, the committee of the whole, maybe have a conversation about, about it. You know, and we may find that nobody.
Is it possible to put that post on our, is it possible, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible to put that post on our Facebook, on our county page?
Of course, yeah.
I, I just feel that we, I, I know we don't want to advertise it full-blown, but at the same time, we don't.
No, no, it's.
Tuck it in the corner.
Put it out there publicly, but maybe not to have it stretched like a few months, kind of, you know. I think normally we have a much longer period of time there, yeah. Counselor Sean Sampson, we look like we were going to.
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to go back to Deputy Warden's comment about Brent Sampson stepping. If we go back to Jayclass Roads, he said, well, maybe roads in Counselor Sampson's district, so. So, yeah, he was pretty much two-stepping as well because he said, Counselor Sampson, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get your bag on this one, Brent, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to stop the dancing, I'm going to.
Two-stepping as much as Deputy Warden is, yeah.
Let's stop the dancing and we'll, it sounds like we may have some consensus to do like a short-term public advertisement. I think, I think it would be probably also in our best interest to reach out to Lisa to, to, you know, just let her know that we discussed this at council. I'm. Sure she was aware that her term was coming up for renewal, but just in the interest of, you know, you know, putting it out there to, to the public. We could, you know, maybe just let her know that that's happening, but we'll consider her still kind of already, already entered in the. You know, in, in terms of having expressed her interest, just, you know, to avoid having people to jump through hoops for no reason, so. So, Dawn, is that something that we could ask staff to do then? Would like to ask you to put out a public advertisement. Maybe with a deadline of the Thursday before our committee of the whole meeting. For a representation for Richmond County on the DCBA board.
So I, I think last year, what we did was we did advertise it in the reporter. The last time.
Yeah.
And when, when is the term up? Did Terry indicate to you?
She, he said, he said AGM next month, and I'll be very honest, I, I'm not sure when that, when exactly the date of that is, like, I got this very, very recently. To tonight's meeting, like, I think it might have been today that I received it, so I didn't have time to. To do as much as I would have liked into that, but it's certainly something we can find out.
So perhaps what I can do is I can check with. With what we did. When, when she was appointed by council to represent the county on the board. And then I can, I can report back to council on that, I mean, I, I, I. I mean, I can do it in, as, as a motion in council and report back to you, and then we can make a decision on what we want to do in the. During the committee, the whole meeting in, in October.
So then we wouldn't be advertising until the middle of October, so I don't think that's going to work in terms of the timing. I don't, I really, I think I'm.
Or I can just, I can, we can make a motion pending how we did it last year and do it the same way, perhaps?
Well, we wouldn't have did it last year, right?
I shouldn't say last year, right, yeah, you're, you're right, the last time we did it, which would have been three years ago, I believe.
So advertise through the same channels as we did last time, but make the deadline, make the Thursday before committee of the whole.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so could I?
If last time we just appointed, I mean, I guess what I want to say here is let's be conscious. If last time we just appointed her, then that is against sort of what we're talking about doing, right? So as long as what we did last time was a public call, then I would say, yes, we should do what we did last time.
Yeah, and the other thing too is that if, if. We would certainly miss the deadline for the, if, if in fact that's what we did, we would miss the deadline for the reporters advertisement deadline. We, we wouldn't get to be able to get it in this week, so we'd only be able to get it next week, and then we'd only have a couple of days. On the, on the, on the, on the advertisement placed in the, in the reporter, so I think that would be unfair as well. So I, I don't know if we could get something, if in fact it was done through the reporter last time. I don't think we would get something in time for committee to hold on the, on the twelfth of October.
What about if we extended out on our social media page, just on our?
Yeah, if you wanted to make that decision that, that.
I should say.
You make it by motion.
So, yeah, I, I should say, is there, maybe I can correct that motion, is there much more? Work to put it on our social media page and then maybe reach out to our TV stations or tell on our St. Peters channel and just have it posted on them? That pretty much recovered a vast majority of the, I guess, the residents of Richmond County.
Well, normally what we do when we're asking for a member at large of this nature, we do pub, publicly advertise in the reporter, so.
Yeah, I just, to your point, Dawn, I don't think time is going to allow for that. So, so councillors, would you be okay with us doing a social media and community TV advertisement?
I guess for the, for the sake of course, we, we could still put it in the reporter, we give people a two-day window to. I, I know it's only a two-day window, but it does cover all bases like, like Dawn suggests and, and then we'll have covered all, all our panels. Of communication through the County of Richmond, more or less, so. I'd be willing to make a motion that staff proceed by sending out.
Advertisement?
An advertisement. I guess via, via the four. You know, tell St. Peters channel, our, our page, the municipality and the reporter.
With a deadline or?
Deadline of Thursday. Right prior to our committee of the whole meeting.
And it should require that people give a little synopsis of why they're a good fit for the Destination Cape Breton Board. Right, like, not just like, hey, I'm interested, but if we don't know anything about them, that doesn't help us make a decision.
So is there a particular reason why we would do Thursday and not say Friday at four?
Yeah, we could totally do Friday.
The package, yeah.
As long as we can get it to our.
Package, yeah.
We could do that.
Okay, so I guess I'd be looking for the motion to be worded that we publicly advertise for Destination Cape Breton Association Richmond County representative. On Tellul, St. Peters Community Channel, social media and the reporter with a deadline of Friday, October.
Eight.
Eighth, at four P M.
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion. Thanks, Deputy Warden. Can I have a second around that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I think that motion is carried. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so then the next item on the agenda was an item added by Deputy Warden regarding municipal flags. Or flags at the municipal building, sorry.
Flags at municipal, yes, so I guess, I guess the best way to approach this is. I was, I was contacted by several of my constituents. I'm going to say of the Irish descent and wondering how they go about getting an Irish flag raised. So I, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council that maybe we can reach out, you know, to the Rocky Bay Irish Club and. In, in that area and let them know that. I think it's a great idea that anybody, you know, looking to raise the Irish flag or whatever, if they have, you know, they, because they have their Irish days or the week. The festival that maybe that's something that we can look at doing is putting up a, a flag for that week, if that's. Consensus of council, I guess.
So Deputy Warden, is this something we could kind of embed, do you think, in our discussion of our flag raising policies that, at the bylaw and policy?
And that's, I brought it up tonight, but I felt, you know, it would be, and I explained to them that we would, I would, I would bring it up by council, but then it would probably be moved to a bylaw. And policy committee meeting and then discussed in more detail at that point.
Okay. Will councillors be okay with that approach?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think we need a motion to that effect because we've already referred flag raising to policy and bylaw, but let's just make a mental note to ensure that. We're including folks from the Irish, Irish communities in Richmond County. Okay. So that is the last item on regular agenda outside of question period. So I will open it now for questions from the public and there's a phone number that's been provided as well as. I think, I think the chat might be available, I, I can't really tell for sure, but Yvonne will be monitoring that. But the phone number is one six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight for folks to call in with their questions, and so I'll just open the floor for a few moments. The questions. We'll have a maximum of ten minutes on this. So Yvonne, are there any questions in the chat?
No, there weren't.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so not hearing the phone ringing, so I will ask for a motion to move the meeting in camera for contract negotiation. Oh, I think Counselor Brent Sampson was first on the, in the gate for that one, so thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson, I have a second there.
I'll take in that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, so we're heading in camera. Thanks so much to the public members. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, so we're heading in camera. Thanks so much to the public members for joining us this evening. Take care.